Dr. Nate Woodworth, 10-485 North West Oregon, your I of Cameron. I'm here as treasurer of the Friends of the Cameron Animal Shelter to present a check to the City of Cameron for $6,553.21 of the donations that we have collected to date for the animal shelter.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, Doctor. Is there anybody else wishing to address the council?
If nobody else, I do have one other thing I want to say.
Okay, sure, Doctor.
Do you need to sign it again?
No, you're good.
Since this is public participation before you guys vote, my other subject that I want to talk about is the budget. You guys are going to talk about it tonight, potentially vote on it, I understand. I just want to say that I'm not against projects. That's all well and good, but you guys need to have a plan. You can't just say you're going to take this money and throw it towards projects. The park board learned really hard from the citizens of Cameron that they've got to have a plan. They couldn't just say, "We're going to put out a pool and put out some ball fields." The citizens wanted a plan. They wanted to know what you're going to do with the money, and they didn't want it tied to EDOC. Fortunately, this time around, it passed. We're going to get a new aquatic center, we're going to get some ball fields, but the park board did their due diligence. If you're going to put in RV parks out of the reservoir, how many are you going to put in? Who's going to run it? I don't think the city really has much business being in the RV park running aspect. What's the return on the investment? How many sites are you going to have? How many sites are going to be out there? Who's going to build them? Who's going to maintain them? If you're going to put more trails, who's going to do all of that? Who's going to upkeep all of those trails? Right now, we've got trails out there that they need to grasp mode, folks, and we need people doing other things which they're trying to get done, and it just seems like, like I said, if you're going to do something with all this money, have a plan before you just throw it out there to do it.
Thank you, Doctor. Right, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to the consent agenda. Are there any requests to remove items from the consent agenda to the regular agenda for discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will read the consent agenda.
Item A, motion to approve the minutes of the August 17, 2020 regular session. Item B, motion to renew the annual liquor licenses for Nell's Restaurant in Jones County, Missouri, and I will say that they need to get all their documents to meet today, so they are ready to go.
Great. I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
So moved. So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of passing the consent agenda please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And then I think we have one abstention.
Abstention.
That motion carries, four in favor, one abstention. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's report, manager's response.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I actually have eight things tonight, so I'm going to go through them pretty rapidly. The first thing is a COVID-19 protocol. That's attached to everyone's council agenda under the city manager's report, and the reason for this is that we have been relatively isolated from the pandemic here, and so we've been in pretty good shape. However, there's good reason to increase our vigilance because of the things that are going on in the rest of the state. And so we have established a detailed protocol for the city staff and for city hall, and it includes such things as addressing people's questions as they come into city hall, and I would include that in the package and would encourage everyone to take a look at that. The second thing is the ribbon cutting for the ADA fishing deck at Sunrise Lake. I think we know that that had been canceled for August 17 and is rescheduled for September 21. That will be at 12:30, and the public is invited. Two more things that I wanted to talk about, and that is a subject to council approval. I have tentatively recommended that we do a council work session on September 14, and the purpose there is for community projects work session, and there is to discuss, interestingly enough, the plan for the expenditure of money that is in the community projects board budget line item. That would be on Monday, September 14 at 6:00 PM, and what we are suggesting is that we do that in the community center, as we, it's been difficult to meet here because of the ADA requirements and some acoustics, and so that's why we're trying to speak up loudly here, but we're going to try doing these at the community center. That would be Monday. Number of building safety issues, and in light of the buildings that have fallen down in several of our community, neighboring communities, it's important that we move along with this as rapidly as we can, and so we want to get the council's input to that. That would be on Monday, September 28. We would also suggest that that be at 6:00 PM at the community center. So what that means is then we have the community projects work session at 6:00 PM on Monday the 14th of September. We have the regular council meeting on the Monday, the 21st of September, which we're suggesting would be at the community center. And then we have the building safety work session on Monday, the 28th of September, also at the community center, followed by the next council meeting, which is on the 5th of October. So that puts us four Mondays in a row, starting with the 14th of September, all in the community center. I know that moves things along pretty rapidly and asks everyone's time on Monday, but these are important issues that I recommend we move forward with. If anyone has some other questions or want to adjust those, I welcome any comments that you may have. And we'll check out the community center to see if maybe that will be an area where we could better accommodate the ADA issues and the acoustics. The next thing I wanted to talk about was an update on Orange Street. We had had some questions about that, and I wanted to give everybody the rundown on how that worked and what happened. We now wish you to notice to proceed for the contractor. That was issued on Monday, August 24. The contractor has 118 days to complete this before penalty days begin, barring bad weather or unforeseen events. And the timeline for that 110 days begins on October 5. The contractor, of course, can begin anytime sooner than that. Also, another interesting thing about that, because of this later closing, beginning operating date, we're involved in the winter time, and so asphalt flats may close earlier, so the contractor is asked that they be allowed to use concrete instead of asphalt. That would be at no additional cost, and so that would be a significant upgrade, which we would hardly encourage that they do. The next item I wanted to talk about was our great Northwest Wholesale Water Commission. I wanted to give everyone an update on that because, as I said last report, we have now got all of our easements completed. They're either signed, or the city attorney has that in the imminent domain process. We also are down now on the engineering, only two parcels that the engineering is not complete on, and our contractor that is doing the engineering on that, CDM Smith, has said they'll have those done in the next two weeks. So when we have the next Wholesale Water Commission meeting, we'll be able to report that all of the easements have been gotten and all of the engineering is done, subject approval by USDA. So that will be a significant moment in completion, and we'll be going back to USDA and ask that they proceed with approval and consider our own applications. And the last thing I wanted to mention was the MML Innovation Award. You all know we submitted that for the, our demolition project for the innovation award, and we received both the innovation award and the members' votes. So members get to vote on which one they thought was great, and we received both of those awards, and they're located right down here on this table, and we'll have some sort of a presentation, presentation for those at the MML Virtual Conference that we'll have here in a couple of weeks. And so I want to thank the entire council for having moved forward with that, and we've got a lot of good notoriety for that, and Cameron was very successful achieving that. We've had other cities who've been calling us and asking how this all works, so we've been talking to them about that. Mayor, that is all I have. Any questions you may have?
Any questions, comments, or questions? Okay. That is the city manager's report. Next item, report to EDOC, Mr. Robert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This evening on chat we have about a couple of projects. One, probably of great interest to you is Project Marvin. It's a big project we've been working on. I really wish I had better news for you on this, but Cameron has kind of slid in that particular category with that company due to two issues. First and foremost is the lack of a building, and the second is, although it's not a necessity for them because they are looking to other places as well, the second one is they have decided they would like to have rail, but don't have rail. However, a couple of the others that they're looking at don't have rail either, so. But the building was the main issue because of their timelines or the, just like it is for most companies. I would tell you also that in that mix, Kansas has stepped into the picture, which they weren't up to a couple of weeks ago, and they have really become a player in that due to a relationship that the company has with a former state senator from Kansas who actually lives in Australia at this point. Better news, however, is that late last week, maybe Friday evening, or Friday or possibly Thursday evening, I can't remember, we did receive another lead, a very, very good lead, once again, a meat processing. That came from the state of Missouri in KCADC. Employment is good, it's very, very similar in numbers to the Project Marvin, with the exception that their capital investment is much higher, potentially higher, but they have a good job number and a good wage number that goes with it. It's a green site, so you don't have to worry about, in this one, about a building. This one's a green site, and they will, they will be doing their own building. I've already contacted Zach, and Zach's been, has gotten me a lot of information, and will continue to have some. We have to have that in by next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. So not all is lost and gone, but I wish we'd have the other because it was, your location was far superior to anybody else, there's no doubt about it, far superior. The other thing is Project Big, which is what we've been talking about for almost a year now. That continues to go on, and it's just illegal, and their due diligence, they're working with the state of Missouri right now for cementry, and once that is done, I think you'll see them take that under, under control and get going, so. Those are really the three main, main issues for this evening, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I would like to add one thing, if I could, to that, and that was based on good suggestions from members of the city council, that the city council would consider doing a building for Project Marvin, so it can be put up for them at the same time when they would come here. There would be some criteria, we have to discuss that, but at least the council would be willing to entertain that, pass that back on to charity, so we can put that into the mix. And so we did talk a little bit about that, and if that's still a possibility, we can continue to entertain that.
They're aware of it and appreciated it, but there, it's a timeline issue. You might want to consider that for the future. I certainly would. That's where, again, that's where about 85 to 90% of your leads come down to that, so.
The, when you're, again, when you were talking about meat processing, we're not talking about a kill plant, we're talking about processing wholesale.
Yeah, no, no kill, no rendering.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Mr. Robert?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have a second and final reading on Bill 2020-34.
Bill 2020-34, an ordinance approving the City of Cameron, Missouri budget of the study fiscal year October 1, 2020 to September 30, 2021.
I'll entertain a motion to pass Bill 2020-34 on second reading by a call.
So moved.
Moving. Moved and seconded.
If you were going to ask for a discussion, Mayor, I did have one comment to make.
Okay.
And that was prior to this, I did want to note for everybody that later on in the agenda, we do have Resolution 2020-31, which discusses how the vote will be taken on this, and so it just, and I'm sure everyone has, has seen that, but what it does say, that no fund can be dispersed from line 400 unless and until proposed dispersment is presented to and approved by a majority of the city council at a meeting of the city council. So that does impact how that plan is filled, and we'll talk more about it at the work session.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Or we proceed to vote?
Darlene Breckerman. No. Becky Curtis. Julie Otis.
Yes.
Roy Estes.
Yes.
Dennis and Clark.
Yes. Motion carries, three in favor, two opposed. Next item on the agenda, second and final reading, Bill 2020-36.
Bill 2020-36, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the agreement binding between the City of Cameron, Missouri and Alliance Water Resources Inc. for management and operations services at the Cameron wastewater facility.
Chair, entertain a motion to pass Bill 2020-36 on second reading by a call.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julie Otis.
Yes.
Roy Estes.
Yes.
Dennis and Clark.
Yes.
Darlene Breckerman.
Yes.
Bill 2020-36 passes, five in favor, zero opposed. That concludes unfinished business and moves us into new business. We have a first reading on Bill 2020-37.
Bill 2020-37, an ordinance of the City of Cameron, Missouri, amending section 2-160, jailing defendants, and 2-166, court costs, both in Division 1 generally of Article 8 Municipal Court of Chapter 2 Administration of the City of Cameron Code.
Chair, entertain a motion to pass Bill 2020-37 on first reading. Is there discussing on? What else we get it on the floor that are discussing?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Yes, council.
I was going to ask Patrick if he would address that a little bit, if some supported things.
This came out of the court review that our municipal court got in February, we got the results in July. Two of the things they recommended was that we update some of the language in our code book, I believe some of it had the new Senate Bill 5, and on the second one that we're changing, we're removing three parts that are obsolete, they're no longer valid, so we're just making the code match the current recommendation of the court.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor of passing Bill 2020-37 on first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda, Resolution 2020-30.
Resolution 2020-30, a resolution for the city council of the City of Cameron, Missouri, to accept bids for the demolition of Bay 06 South Chestnut Street and award the bid to Rimco Demolition LLC.
Chair, entertain a motion to pass Resolution 2020-30.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
So after we do this, is ours, the property, or we just have a lien on it?
Well, I think, you know, the director, to start us off, and then we'll follow on that question.
All right.
Just to give you guys a little bit of history on step.
Pull your mouse past, I can hear you there.
Just to give you guys a little bit of history, step, they've all been pulled away for mercy. Basically Chestnut Rogers is a property that we've had some issues with over the last couple of years. Tried to work with the property over two, abate issues, we're getting nowhere, so proceeded with a dangerous building hearing. There was a fact and finding from that hearing, basically deemed that property dangerous. So we set it out for bid about a couple of weeks ago, or three, four weeks ago, had open bid, closed bid. There was about nine bidders on that project. They ranged from $29,000 to $74,000, so we went with the lowest bid. Paul checked all the references on that bid, got good reviews, everything checked out, so we're moving forward.
I think the councilman had a question regarding ownership after the demo and. Yeah, I'm just curious. I know you guys have done this for a while, still a little bit.
There, there was a note on the property that, that the property owner had a lien, so basically we're taking action to demo, demo the project, so we'll be basically lining up in line after those liens are filled, so there's a possibility that we won't get anything from it, just other than abate the issue.
So if I'm understanding you right, the property we retain is named, there are mortgages that would be in front of us, and so depending on the size of those mortgages, there's a reasonable chance we do not actually collect anything.
Yes, and we will put a lien on the property for the services of the demo team, and like I said, we'll just wait in line till we're on bottom of the chain, I should say.
But eventually, if anybody wanted to do anything to that property.
They would have to.
Everybody, the whole lien against that, would have to come to some kind of, all right, so we're not just out this money.
No.
Necessary.
Yes and no, but the bigger issue is, the biggest problem that we got really is.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed to vote. All those in favor of passing Resolution 2020-30, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda, Resolution 2020-31.
Resolution 2020-31, a resolution establishing certain procedures in the dispersment of funds from line 1010400, Community Projects of the 2020-2021 Budget of the City of Cameron, Missouri.
Thank you. Chair, entertain a motion to pass Resolution 2020-31.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
I was on the line to talk about this, I already mentioned it previously about what that contained, and we'll look forward to moving forward with this on the work session on the 14th, if we are able to continue with that data.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2020-31, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, three in favor, two opposed. Next item on the agenda, for the Loggers Annual Meeting, the employer delegate's.
This is an annual appointment, annual appointment. Loggers has a meeting once a year, and for each meeting, there's an employer delegate, which is what I'm asking for this evening, and there's also a member delegate. The nominations for the member delegate, when I came in on the employees payroll checks today, and they have to have those back to me by Friday. The cost, it's in this conference, they're planning on having, and first of conference in Springfield in October, the cost of the hat is paid by Loggers, we just have to pay the lodging and the wireless. It is October 29th and 30th, and it's not in, always in Springfield, it's not in Springfield, it's way to the Ozarks this year. So if anyone would like to go, please let us know.
Okay. So at this point, you need us to do anything else, or we're just saying this is.
At least we can make an appointment tonight, or if you guys would like to wait, maybe in the next regular.
Aye.
It's still in the bed, so we kind of need to see through the membership, because, no, it doesn't happen, oh, it doesn't, no, no. You guys are going to choose amongst yourselves, and the employees choose among themselves.
Is there any council member that would like to attend?
I've been a couple of times, very informative, if anybody wants to know about retirement, it's a good one to go to, kind of gives you some updates and a little background on it, so, but I've been, so I don't feel the need that I need to go.
Yeah, that would work for my schedule. Anybody else? I think it's an opportunity that a council member go, but it's an opportunity.
I would have, last year, the council appointed me to represent that, and I'd be happy to do that again, but I will tell you, it is very useful, and as our lady said, to find out how all that works, and great information about the retirement system, if anyone would like to go, but I'd be available to represent. This is the retirement system for the city employees?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, if anybody, if any council member, would you like to know, council member?
No, I'll just say.
I would have to look at the calendar and find out.
Well, if it's agreeable with everybody, why don't we go ahead and appoint the manager, and then if the council member's interested in going, they can contact the manager. Is that agreeable?
Certainly, and then if we do a change in name of someone, we're not.
Do you need this by a motion, or is this satisfactory?
A motion, a vote.
Okay.
I would, but we appoint the city manager to be the council representative, that's the longest.
I second it.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Now proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. Okay, next item on the agenda, our second public participation. If there's anybody wishing to address the council, please come forward to the table, give your name, address, and we'll give you five minutes to address the council. Okay, seeing none, that is all. Okay.
I've heard a couple of things here tonight, and I'd like to ask for clarification, but the very first thing I'd like to mention, I talked with Paul Beckler the other day, I saw him inspect one of the buildings on Third Street, and part of my background, as I explained to you, is another Donovan apartment, that I Grand View Plus, I was in at the Kansas City Fire Department's office, I was an inspector down there. It's, I really encourage you to fill your building inspector position, but I'd also like to ask respectfully that you require that individual to have fire inspection practices background. That way he can do both. The opportunity to go into businesses increases more if a fire inspector can go in and do, I don't know whether you have occupancy here in town, occupancy by distance, we used to do those down at Grand View. We, and it was just a short inspection, we checked the extinguisher, did a fast look around, familiarization of the building, it gives the firemen a chance to know the building. Granted, Cameron's smaller and everything, but with a fire background, it gave it the chance, but it also gave us a chance to talk with our building inspector and tell him the things that we saw in there, and get his heads up and looking in, that he might want to get in there, or at our request, we could ask him to go in. So I ask that you include that in your qualifications. Mister, you said manager, you know, if you got that in the qualifications.
I've got that note, and we'll look at it. We haven't had that discussion yet, but we'll include your comments, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, in fire inspections, by the way, if so, if they find something wrong, they can come back in thirty days or sixty days or something and see if it's corrected. Again, you have a chance to enter that business, and maybe you'll see water damage or something that you can report back to the building inspector. But the, I'd encourage you to carry two titles. Second, I heard Terry Rumbering mention, what, what called this Merlin, Marlin, project?
Marlin, Project Marvin.
Project Marvin. Did I hear the word meat processing?
I, I, I think it's a, it's an animal food processing, dog food.
One of you said meat processing.
Well, I, I have a question.
Oh, you asked.
I asked him.
Oh, it's an animal processing?
Yeah, I think maybe you can talk to, uh, to Terry Rumbering about food, what he has been working in for us.
Okay, well, uh, I just wondered a little clarification on that, uh... Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have problems in this place? Okay. Seeing none, uh, that will move us to miscellaneous comments from the staff.
I'd like to remind everybody that City Hall will be closed on September seventh for Labor Day, and for the rest of that week, I will be on the communication, so still call me if you need me, I won't be in the office. And just a reminder, um, M. M. L. is the fourth week, sixth week, and I did, uh, leave you guys to the current agenda. I will point out some information on that, how everybody's supposed to access that, because there's some confusion, I'm not sure how everybody's going to access, I don't know if they give us that information yet, but I will follow up with that, let you guys know.
Manager, did you have to be said?
No, you're on your own.
Seeing director?
Mr. Yon, uh, you, you have been working on that draft for the, uh, inspector position, and there is some qualifications in there for ICC certification, qualification to that position.
ICC?
International Local Council, their certification.
Really, no?
Yeah.
Well, I'm talking about the car.
There, I think there's a certification for that, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Director? Finance, uh, for her?
Finance.
Director?
I'm sir.
Okay. That concludes comments from the staff, and moves us into comments from the council.
Um, I just want to take a break while I know that the commu- community people from the community come to our meeting, it means a lot. Uh, I had somebody come in today just to sit down and talk. Uh, there's been a lot of stuff going on, um, a lot, a lot of information being given out about our meetings, and it caused a lot of people to have questions, and I just say, come on in and let's chat, and this is this person did today, and I was really glad they did, and I just want to thank you guys for that and encourage more people to, and I'm also going to encourage the council to go today on the M. M. L., but it's, I saw some really good topics on there, and so if you can't make it, you can sort of sit down some way, and instead of watching, like, so you can watch those.
Um, the only thing I have is Main Street met last week, and we have decided to have a, uh, downtown cleanup, pulling weeds, kind of, you know, sprucing things up downtown. That's September twelfth at nine thirty. We welcome any volunteers that would like to come and help, wearing your gloves, your, you know, your muscles and whatever, and I think the city's going to provide some sprayers for us, spray the, the cracks in the sidewalk and get rid of, of that grass, and try to, we're gonna pull weeds and the, the flower beds and things like that, so, I, well, I encourage all the council members to come, help me here, and, uh, help also.
That's my anniversary weekend, but is there any certain thing that we can donate? My recent...
Um, you know, I, I don't think so, but let me, we'll get back to you. Okay?
Counsel, any comments?
Like I said earlier before the session, I want to play the newspaper. In school, they're doing a lot of things to try the best they can to get through this and still service the community as well. Uh, I don't know if it gets real, but NADA, I choose, before I would ever vote for an expenditure of any of this, it would be well betted and well planned, or the money would not go anywhere. That's it.
Okay, right, and, and, okay? And I don't have anything either. Next item on the agenda is executive session for court attorney, client communications, and real estate.
Your honor, I'd like to make a note on that. One of the reasons we had put that down was, uh, to talk about Project Marvin, to provide opportunity, Terry has already done that, and so we do not have anything else on the agenda for closed session.
Okay, so we don't need a closed session?
Correct.
And that would mean we need a motion to adjourn?
Still move.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of adjournings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. Stand adjourned, thankful.